Look, look, look. Could I have everyone's attention, please? Are we live?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Monday, June 5th, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting. For those of you that don't know us, I'd like to introduce people at the table. We have our town administrator over there, Rebecca Oldham, Kathy Castronella, Selectwoman, Jason Ames, Mac Parental, Edward Watson, and myself, Daniel McDonald. Would everyone please join us in saying the Pledge of the Allegiance? All right. We have some people here, so just to expedite things and get them...
Make a motion to take the agenda out of order?
Yes, I make a motion to take the agenda out of order so that we can help facilitate the people that are going to talk before us to leave early before we discuss all the other business, so. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Who do we want to talk to here? This is number six on the right. I'm a discussion impossible votes. William Dunn and the town administrator on the issue of the Economic Development Committee. Bill, would you introduce yourself for the record?
Mr. Dunn, Kent Garrison Street, Groveland. And that was before your last meeting to discuss the economic board. And as I told you guys when I was here, you guys did a good job hiring the town administrator, and she's done some work on it as well. And I probably going to let her talk about her findings and what she's done, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So at the last meeting, we had talked about what the Economic Development Committee creation or what the committee would look like. And so after taking a look at what other communities have done in the surrounding area as well as speaking with Mr. Dunn, we had found that it would be recommended that there be nine voting members that would be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, that they would be made up of six members from business owners in town. One member would be a representative of the planning board, and one member would be a representative of the zoning board, and then there would be one member of the resident at large. And so as we discussed at the other meeting, the focus areas for the committee would be to advise the selectmen and other town boards on issues concerning bylaws, policies, regulations in zoning that foster commercial growth, strengthen the local economy, and are consistent with maintaining the character of our community. Focus efforts on activities that maintain or expand the commercial and industrial tax base. Identify changing economic trends and develop recommendations to maximize interest in our community and attract these potential new businesses, and advocate for state and federal grants, incentives, or for improvements in regulations that help advance our economic priorities and establish relationships and improve communications with local businesses. So we figured this committee would actually be an advisory committee. They would serve the Board of Selectmen, and they would report to the Board of Selectmen. It would be stacked by the Economic Development and Planning Department. So we would provide monthly reports or updates as needed, or a representative of the committee would be present to speak to the board in regards to the work that they are working on and any recommendations that they'd like to bring forward to the board.
So that being said, what I would like to do is get the board, if they could vote tonight. I can read the list of members that have been pulled out. You got Steve Collins, Collins Tree Service Business Owner. You have Maureen Crawford of Chesterton Business Representative. You have Monica Carbone, Pub 97 Business Owner. Brian Cornell, Town Center Business Owner. John Guilfoyle, Town Center Business Owner. Brad Legos on the Planning Board. Chris Goodwin on the ZVA. You have Angus Jennings, a resident of economic development background. So she's not actually a business, but she's in the business of economic background. And then myself. So I would like, if we could get a vote, and then what we can do is maybe we can get any or someone to write letters, and we'll try to get a letter out to everyone saying, "When can we meet?" I did hear they want to meet during the day rather than the evenings, which I'm sure we could all talk about it. And I think as Rebecca said, it's going to be end of the day, selectmen vote what happens. I'm sure some of this is going to be brought to town meeting at one point in time of the big projects or whatever, but I think right now we need to go on a fishing expedition and get this process going and put everyone at a table. I think we're heading in the right direction, and we got to now have a planning department. You know what I'm saying? We have all the departments the town needed. We have a town administrator. I think we're in the right avenue to head forward with this.
And do you have any comments on what Rebecca said would possibly be the charge? It's broad enough in scope?
Yep, 100%.
So we'd have to create the charge and then the committee?
Yep.
And then we could possibly put them on the agenda for next... If you submitted those to Rebecca?
You got it.
Assuming that we vote forward. Anybody have any... Kathy?
Well, a couple of things. I think we should vote the charge. I was just trying to get that down and writing so we could vote the charge. And if you could just repeat the names of the business owners and what businesses they are. I got the zoning board and the planning board.
So this...
So I can do that, too.
Okay, go ahead.
So there'll be Bill Dunn with Dunn Landscaping. There would be Steve Collins with Collins Family Tree. There would be John Guilfoyle with John Guilfoyle Public Relations. Maureen Chesterton, who is the representative of... Sorry, Maureen Crawford, who is a representative of Chesterton. Monica Carbone, who is one of the soon-to-be owners of Pub 97. Brad Legos, who is a member of our planning board, but he is also a business owner here in town for Groveland Self-Storage. Chris Goodwin is the zoning board of appeals chairman and a resident of Groveland. And then Angus Jennings is the resident at large. He is a resident of Groveland, but he is also the town administrator, excuse me, the town manager over in West Newbury and has an extensive economic development background.
Okay, so we have West Newries Town Manager. That's our resident. And then we have five business members because one of them's a zoning, representing zoning.
Sorry, it should also be Brian Cornell with Norwood Insurance.
Oh.
So there'd be six business members, but seven if you also count the planning board representative, who is also a business owner.
Anyone else? Done, Kathy?
Well, I know Rebecca, she always says it better. And she provided me with copies of other towns' ones of the mission statement. Certainly, I invite her to add to this if this is not exactly in the spirit of what she just said for the charge, but make a motion to create this Economic Development Committee as an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen or the mission statement. And I'm copying this right out of Littleton, so feel free to add and detract. "To help attract, retain, and expand local businesses to increase and diversify the town's commercial tax base, consistent with community character. Promote appropriate and responsible development and redevelopment of commercial industrial properties. Identify changing economic trends and develop recommendations to maximize interest in our community." Does there anything else? All right, that would be the charge, if that's...
Discussion. Yes?
Sounds like you put together a great team of people to spearhead this.
That's well. I'm not going to take all the credit.
To start.
Yep.
Ed?
Did you... Did you hear the charge? And do you have any problem with that at all?
Not at all.
Okay.
Mac? We're good, ready to vote? All those in favor? All right, got a new committee?
Thank you.
And we'll put it on the agenda for next time.
And I'm sure they'll work hard. They're all good people.
Do we want to appoint these people this meeting, or...
I think we need it on agenda. I don't know. Am I wrong on that?
There is the committee appointments towards the end of the agenda if you wanted to include it as part of that, since the list is already created.
Well, then we'll get to task. Do we have the list?
We do.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
All right, so.
I'm sure we'll all work hard.
Motion?
Okay, so we're going to move to appoint these people, right?
If there's a motion.
Sure. Rebecca, help me out with the names. William Dunn of Dunn's Landscaping. Steve Collins of Collins Tree Service. John Guilfoyle of Guilfoyle PR. Another microphone means I'm not speaking up. Maureen...
Crawford.
Crawford of Chesterton. And is it Monica?
Monica.
Monica.
Carbone.
Carbone, Pub 97. And Brian...
Cornell.
Cornell of Norwood Insurance. And on our planning board is...
Brad Legos.
Brad Legos, and our zoning board...
Chris Goodwin.
Chris Goodwin. Did I miss the resident at large?
Angus Jennings.
Oh, Angus Jennings is our resident at large. Would be the motion for appointments.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
All right.
All right. Continuing out of order. Number two, special event permit for Kevin Sweeney on behalf of ALS TDI Tri-State Truck for Cycling Event on June 25th with rest stop location at the Pines Recreation Area Pavilion.
So I make a motion to approve a booking of the Pines Recreation Area Pavilion for June 10th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to...
That's a different thing.
Oh. That's your thing.
Yeah, we'll get there next. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
This one's an easy one.
Where is it? Is it the 8:30? Hey, Sweeney?
Kevin Sweeney, yeah.
Yes, okay, so... I'm not reading what it is they want. They want the Pines Recreation Area Pavilion, yes?
Yes, for a cycling rest stop.
Oh, okay, so it's an ongoing thing. So it's from 8:30 a.m. to 1400, which is... Wait a minute.
2:00.
2:00, I knew that. To 2:00 p.m. And that would be on...
June 25th.
June 25th, 2023. I'll move that.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Okay.
All right. Was it the next one, sir?
Yes.
All right, okay, I'm sorry. Number three on the list here, special event permit for Lee Thomas for a family event on June 10th at Pines Pavilion and Utility Field, number two, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Now you, Mr. Thomas? Would you...
Lee Thomas for Baldwin Terrace.
All right.
So my family does a reunion every year, and we usually have it in New Hampshire, but the venue kicked us out on Tuesday last week, so I've been scrambling trying to find a place. And I thought, "The Pines is the perfect spot." So that's... I checked with Rebecca to see if it was okay, and I still love the permit, so.
There you go.
There we go.
Anybody want to talk about it? Kathy?
It looks fine.
Jason?
No, we're good.
Mac, you good?
Good. All good, good.
Lot of opposition, sir. All those in favor? Oh, I didn't have a motion. It's like a motion.
Make a motion to approve the booking by Lee Thomas for a family reunion at the Pines Recreation Area Pavilion, June 10th, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
No other discussion, no. All those in favor? Hey, good luck. Have a good time.
Thank you.
All right, might as well move down the list now. We're in back to order, other than the Marvins in the minutes. One day liquor license for Wayne Cariya on June 23rd, 2023, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at V.C. Memorial Park for a private party. Kathy?
I had had a question I had asked Mr. Dempsey. I think he was checking on it as far as it said the copy of the server training certificate or license number for who's serving the liquor. Is that something we typically collect with these? I know you keep papers that we don't see. Or maybe I saw it and didn't know what it was.
I know that Vanessa Lopez over at V.C. had just sent me up and... Sent me over an updated binder this morning, so it could possibly be in that one.
Want me to come back to it?
Yes, we can do that.
Anyone have any objection? We'll come back to it. All right, moving right along. Utility easement acceptance for seven Katie Lane, King Meadow Development.
So, Mr. Chair, this comes forward through the planning board. The planning board has permitted the subdivision over off of King Street. It is going to be known as Katie Lane. As part of that, there is utilities that run through the roadway, and as part of the process, they must grant the town access to the utilities so that if something were to happen, the town has the ability to enter the property while they're in the process of constructing and still own the road as well as the lots. And whether or not those lots are mortgaged and sold, the town will still have the ability to enter the property for those utility lines if necessary. And I believe Mr. Kunniff is here this evening if there's any specific questions towards that development.
Does that require a vote or approval of the board?
It does require a vote for signature of the document to accept the easement.
Okay. Have you reviewed it?
I have.
Who else reviewed it?
The attorney that presented it from Mr. Kunniff, as well as the town planner and also the planning board.
And they're on board with it?
It is a standard form, so it meets all of the qualifications as...
They would have walked on it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion for passage.
Motion for passage is second. Any discussion?
Do we have to be specific in the motion, or is it okay to say?
Just to accept the easement.
As noted.
Did you say that? I'm sorry.
Accept the easement as noted.
Yeah, make a motion to accept the easement for seven Katie Lane, King Meadow Development off of... Seven Star Road, uh, Seven...
King Street.
Uh, King Street, excuse me. King Street.
Tackled and stands. Thank you. Any further discussion, Kathy?
No, I mean, this is easement. They'll always be there like it's for the...
Gives us rights to access it.
Right, to go in there if there's a problem, that's it.
All right.
And it specifically states.
Yeah, okay.
Voting?
Oh, yeah.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Number seven, Pines Recreation Dog Park was access gate and permit discussion. Jason?
I think we did the hours last time, right?
We did.
Yes.
18:00.
We did. Sorry for the redundancy.
No worries. I know that Rebecca did a little bit of work in putting together some graphs of applications.
Yes.
Did everybody have a chance to go over that and look at them?
I looked at them. They look beautiful.
Yeah, they do.
I like the purple.
They're elaborate, comprehensive.
I like this one. I like the boxes.
I know I contacted the town clerk in Beverly. They no longer issue tags for their dogs for the use of the dog park. So I still have to find the tag or source for the tags. But they're looking like they're between $1 and $4 a piece.
Affordable.
Yes. The other thing I did want to bring up is in terms of who pays the fees. I didn't think we should charge fees for seniors or veterans.
Veterans for sure, seniors? Might have more money than me.
I do.
Yeah, yeah, you. There you go.
But I know that we have a...
Veterans, yes.
A larger senior population that utilizes the park. And they enjoy the opportunity to talk to people down there.
Should they pay more, provide tax returns? Personal financial statements?
Discourage that at all.
All right, okay.
So that is something that I did want to make sure that we mentioned. And then I think we should really talk about the fees and how much we should charge. I know typically a charge for access to a dog park is between $25 and $35.
For a visit?
No, for the...
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this? What would you like to do with this, Jason? You want to move it, or you want to just discuss it some more?
Let's move it.
I would definitely like to move to accept these applications. I do need to know a little bit more about how we can set up on the website because the police chief does want us to be able to upload a picture of the rabies vaccine paperwork and the picture of the dog.
I can work with City Hall Systems to see if that's possible and how we can do that.
Okay. Yeah, I would definitely like to adopt this with a $25 fee for use of the park and service dogs, seniors, and veterans would be exempt, and $35 for non-residents.
How about, could I add something?
Sure.
Active members of the military.
Sure.
How's that?
Sounds good.
Technically, they're not veterans yet, right? There you go.
I like it. So that would be my motion.
Second.
Discussion, Edward.
I noticed this still going through the town clerk's office, and I just don't think that that's fair. The office is getting busier, and it's... To put a... To put an extra burden on them, I don't think that makes sense. There's got to be a better way to do it than through the town clerk's office.
Mr. Chair?
I'm just... Go ahead, Kathy.
Well, we just formed the Economic Development Committee, and we put that burden onto the town planner to assist them. It's correct, right? So I mean, towns' needs are growing. We only have a certain amount of staff, whereas we all know staffing is fixed at the time of the annual town meeting. We can certainly evaluate this during the budget season and see how much additional work it is. But I feel like you got to start somewhere. We need to start somewhere. If we keep pushing everything off because it's more work, nothing gets done. And I think this dog park will require some funding, and I feel that those of us that use it should provide that funding. So I think we should at least try it, and if it starts to become a huge burden, we can reevaluate it. Start somewhere.
Jason, I'll ask you a question. Do you have any idea how... How many dogs? I mean, and do you have any estimates of how much revenue we could generate? And at some later point in time, we could either transfer funds or vote on that procedurally or use some of this money to defray additional workload for the town clerk?
Right now, I think there's about 300 different people that utilize that park regularly. I know Facebook page just is approaching 900. But of course, there's not... Not everybody has a dog. Some people have moved away. So it's a rough estimate, about 300. They're down there at least once a week. A lot of people are down there daily. So, yeah, 300 and 25.
Well, there's additional fees here, though. There's 70, 75, and then there's off-leash, non-resident.
Well, that's the 2025 that are listed here. That's just the licensing, which is already at the clerk's office.
Yeah.
And so these are just... Four numbers just put in here.
But everybody that had a dog that wanted to use the park would need an off-leash permit in addition to the license?
Yes, but the license is provided from the town... Yes, but the license is provided from the town that the dog is, resides.
Right.
The regular license.
That's.
Your off-leash license for here in Groveland would be the only thing that they would reclaim.
May I just ask clarifying, so what you're saying basically is the permit to use the dog park is the off-leash permit? That's, that's what it is? That, the others are just our regular dog license fees that we are supposed to pay anyway, which I do pay.
And we're going to try to find a way to put this online so that it's just on, uh, kind of hands-free, virtually, online, and, um, what would be the, um, what would be the burden or the tax, um, assigned to the town clerk?
The biggest burden to the town clerk would be sending out the tag.
Mailing tags? 300 tags here from the town clerk?
May I speak?
Yes.
Thank you. I know you have a lot of expectations on what people use for online services, but we have registered 600 dogs this year and 79 have used the online service. We registered 650 last year and 128 utilized the online services. The boat ramp keys, there have been 37 people who have requested a key online this year, and last year it was 52. The treasurer's office has two full-time employees, and it is my hope that you would give this additional duties to the treasurer's office, since all payment that comes in goes to the, the overall budget for the town and not to the clerk's office. I would also like you to take into consideration that 2024, there will be four elections in nine months, they are all much different now than they've ever been before with the mail-in, and we will have little time for anything else but elections in 2024.
Ask a question?
Yes.
What if we, uh, if we could, I don't know, I see why not, but, um, maybe you can tell me, what if we mandated that the, um, dog park permit had to be done online, it was mandated, it would not be, it's the only means of registering and paying part, and, and if all you had to do, they come down and say, here's my receipt, where's my tag? I know it might be times 300, but it certainly wouldn't be, you know, looking over applications and taking money and that sort of thing, what would that be a compromise solution here?
If we could plan to do it once a week and not do it on a regular, on, like an ongoing basis.
If somebody came to you, say you have to do it online, you just have to, you know, can we do that, you know, I don't.
And then to make sure that they, how do we deny it once they haven't included all their paperwork that they're supposed to? Because for the most part, they forget to include their paperwork now, and it's, we have to send them out a letter, we have to remind them, they have to send it back again.
If it's done on the website, you know, like I, I renewed my bar license today, and if I didn't fill in the fill, there's a little red asterisk next to it, I couldn't, you know, couldn't submit, you know, I wanted to.
So you'll have to attach your documents with your picture and your, your rabies information?
Yeah.
Or else it won't allow them to complete the application?
Upload that, how sophisticated is this website?
We'd have to, I'd have to double check, I think there's a way, and if there's not a way through the City Hall Systems, there may be a way through our website portal, um, and then you'd fill the application on the website portal, and then we'd have to put payment into the City Hall Systems, um, but I would have to double check with City Hall Systems to see whether or not they could just do a one-stop shop, but we could probably either do that or a dual approach.
How about this, if somebody did it online, right, entirely, and they pay, and then somehow we can find the vendor for the tags, maybe the tags are just directly mailed to the, um,
Sure.
the applicant, and then you're out of the loop.
There you go.
I think that'd be the way to handle it, is just, uh, you know, it's just drop shipment.
It makes more sense, especially with the number of out-of-town people that use the park, because there's no way to track.
So, can we approve this conditionally on pulling that off, and then it's out of the loop?
Sure.
Then I don't know how you link the money to the treasurer's office, that's not my, that's not my wheelhouse.
We'll do it online, and that's, and I can set up, uh, at the dog park.
So make the friendly amendment to the motion that we approve this with, um, the off-leash, what is it called again?
And, and.
Off-leash, um.
Permit.
Permit.
Can I stop you, Kathy?
Yeah, sure, why not? Go for it.
Well, it's, it's just, it's just a revelation here for, you know, should we add something for mailing it out, or is that sufficient funds there for the tag to just, um, you know, plus shipping and handling?
I think we just have the company send it, you know, they'll take it out of the whatever fee, let the company mail it right to them.
Yeah, but is there enough money in the application fee to defray that cost, or to be plus shipping and handling, I mean, I'm, I'm into minutia now, yeah?
No. We can raise the rates next year.
Continue, sorry for the interruption.
You're, you're forgiven.
Trying to be helpful.
Thank you. Lawrence laughing. So the amendment would be that the off-leash permit is available only through online, and the, um, tag will be mailed directly to the person completing the form. So if they have a problem with it, they go back to the company, not to us, not to the town clerk.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
There you go. Teamwork.
Second.
All right, any further discussion, Ed?
Uh, two questions. Who's going to enforce it, and what's the penalty for non-compliance?
Uh, the same people that are going to enforce it are the ones that enforce the registration of dogs in the towns.
Who's that?
Nobody, it doesn't get enforced unless it's an incident.
It's a toothless dog.
Yes.
So if, if somebody goes into the dog park and they don't have a tag, nobody's going to enforce it?
There's nobody there, we're not going to hire somebody to do it.
Well, that's my question, who's going to enforce it?
Nobody. It's just like when a dog's walking down the street, who's checking their tags to make sure they're registered in the town? Nobody, they're supposed to be, that's the law.
We'll see what the compliance is, and you know, maybe we'll have.
Why, why would, why would somebody comply if there's no teeth in it?
Um, because it really brings a sense of ownership and appreciation of what they have, so you have a lot of people that are responsible, and now have gotten another step, it's sort of like when you go to sign up on a page on a website, they make you sign up, they'll do it because they want to make it difficult for you to sign up, it makes, it gives you a certain sense of ownership, and it brings a certain level of pride.
Anyone else, Mark?
Nope.
Kathy, we all set?
We're not going to throw the puppies in jail.
Does he roll to jail?
We can put a sign up saying, you know, whatever, with a website or something.
Yeah.
All right, move the question, all those in favor? One, one opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, passes four to one. Moving right along. Number nine. Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022 provides E R R S acronym, what's that stand for?
The Essex Regional Retirement System.
Thank you. With a local option to increase COLA, cost of living adjustment up to 5% for fiscal year 2023, vote required, requires two-thirds approval of the cities and towns within the system, I guess we're in the system.
We are.
Okay.
And included in your packet is a list of the municipalities that make up the Essex Regional Retirement System and how they have voted on this matter thus far. I did check in about the upcoming fiscal year 2024 assessment, and that will not change, but future assessments will change based upon whether or not this vote is successful. Essentially, it will increase the liabilities of the retirement system, and those liabilities are how we get assessed for our portion of said liability.
What will it cost us in the, in this year, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, but, um, 5% instead of what, what is it currently?
Currently, so this is in addition to the 2% that they've already offered for fiscal year, and this would be retro, so it's an additional 3% to the 2% that was already voted.
How could it be retro, we have already voted on a budget?
So that's what I meant, so I did ask them, FY23 will not be impacted and FY24 will not be impacted, it will only affect our future assessment and the liabilities that are currently there within the retirement system.
And how much is our current unfunded, what is it called?
Unfunded, so essentially, following the formula, the Essex Regional Retirement System calculated the cost of this benefit to the retire system, retirement system will be $6.5 million.
Is that all?
So this cost is added into the total liabilities of the retirement system, which are then offset by our total assets to determine our unfunded liability, so I don't know what the actual impact to our assessment in the future will be, just that it will be at, $6.5 million will be added.
But we have an unfunded liability right now, isn't it like a million and a half or something, so we're already behind?
The current unfunded liability of the retirement system as of January 1st, 2022 is $417.8 million.
So if we vote for this, then we dig ourselves in deeper. Okay. All right, Kathy?
I don't recall being asked about this like last year or the year before, ever. Is this something new that they actually are asking us something that they usually don't ask us?
Um, so this was all based on, um, the Acts, chapter two, or chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022 that were signed into law on November 16th, 2022, so this wasn't something standard, typical, historic, um, when I asked, the Essex Regional Retirement is 2%, the, um, is standard 3%. All COLA increases are effective July 1st of each year, the retirement board has traditionally voted a 3% COLA increase each year, although in 2020, the board approved a 2% COLA increase for FY21, but standard, it is a 3%.
So the retirement board typically votes up to 3%?
Exactly.
And they want to go over that, they want to do the 2% plus 5%?
That is correct.
Okay, so, that's a lot, so our, in our assessment from the system, we're, it changes each year, right, based on our payroll as a percentage of other?
And the amount of retirees that we have in the system.
Is it just retirees, or is it active employees as well?
Um.
I'd have to look, I, it's been a long time since I looked at it.
So I included in your packet the assessment for fiscal year 24.
Okay. So, so if we added the 6 million some odd to the total and then took our percentage share, we'd have a ballpark of what this 5% would do?
To some extent, yes.
So could we table this, do we have time to do this and look at it properly?
What's the timeline, Rebecca?
Um, this needs to be voted on by, I think it's July. Uh, June 30th, 2023. Is when you, you need to have the vote submitted by.
I think we need to get it done, it's just, you know, what's the, what's the reason for it? Did they give us a rationale, they just want more money, the stock market's down, I mean, what's the reason for adding to it?
I'll be in cost of living, I assume it would just be the inflation and how everything's gone up.
Anyone else?
Ben?
Uh, normally, the retirement board has, has granted a 3% cost of living every year, for the most part, and it's only on, depending on what the retirement board, uh, it's either 12,000 or 13,000, it's not on a full amount, and this year, the legislature, uh, because of, uh, financial, uh, restraints of some of the members, they decided to allow, to go to 5%, it's just a one-year thing, so it's, uh, it's really, it's not on the full retirement, it's either on whatever, uh, whatever the Essex County Retirement Board has, it's either 12 or 13,000, you know, it'll be, uh, 2% above the three, not 5% above the three. They, they probably will give a 3%, then they're just asking for the approval for this year only to go to 5%. So, it's, it's not, it's not a big amount, and it might help some of the, some of the people out. And some of the retirement systems have gone to a base of 21,000, there's a couple of them, uh, some of them are at 13, 14%, uh, I think there's only one at, at, one or two at, at 12, the rest of them have raised it, so, the Essex County probably at 13,000.
And to that, as you see in your memo too, that the COLA base for the Essex Regional Retirement is $16,000, which means that eligible retirees will receive an additional 320 each added to their pension benefit for FY2023.
Anybody else? Actually Kathy, I, I.
I'm just, I'm still circling around on this, why it's coming up such a last minute, if this act was passed in November of 2022, why are we just seeing this now and need to pass it in, you know, in the next couple of weeks? So we're saying this is a one-time thing, 300 bucks is what they want us to give out one time, and that's it, it's not going in forever?
16 grand in the aggregate, right?
This is just, this is just for this fiscal, the, the retro for last, this fiscal year, FY23, and it is only the, the retirees and survivors.
How do we budget for that, I'm confused on that, it's just, it's retroactive, where's the money coming from? You just add it to the debt?
Essentially.
It's just a book entry adding to the debt. And somebody has to pay it later.
Essentially, that, that's what the, the calculation that's in your packet is what the actuary had put together, so that's what they're doing based upon the, the life expectancy, based upon all the other data, all the things that you see with our OPEB evaluation is the same exact thing that they're doing here, and taking that into consideration to predict the unfunded liabilities and what we can expect to pay.
All right, anything else, Kathy?
Well, I just want to make sure I clearly understand, each year they vote the increase, the retirement board, and it can go up to 3%?
Correct.
And then this special act passed in November 22, 2022, does it, this special out, allow them to do this each and every year if they wish to?
It just says for fiscal year 2023, up to 5% of the base amount specified pursuant to general law, chapter 32, section 103.
I saw that, yeah.
And it says that the approval of the increase can occur at any time during the fiscal year and will take effect as of July 1, 2022. Which is the beginning of fiscal year 23.
And we think our share is somewhere around $16,000?
No, that, that is what the eligible, that's based upon the, the calculation that you see in your packet was provided by the, um, E R S, and so it essentially takes the numbers of retirees, survivors and benefits per 2021 annual statements, and then it applies the percentage, and it comes up with the $16,000 COLA base, and then spread across the retirees, then you're only really getting the 300 and, um, $20 that are added to each individual pension benefits.
Right, so we don't have a ballpark on it, what ours is?
Not what the unfunded liability is, because it's not directly tied to the funding in place.
But how about the funding part, well?
It's a projection, it's an actuarial.
What the actuary does, they come up with a projection based upon all of the data that is presented.
Mortality rates and age and time and age and all of that, it's a complex equation.
Who's current, how many people do we have currently?
Um, we and ours, I have the number, because I just requested it.
So we have to rely on that figure essentially, that's the best available info.
Exactly.
And those people are licensed, and that's what they do.
So so far, they have four yeses and two noes. Mayor Mack voted no, Wes Nibbey voted no.
Yes, and the rest are yeses. So we have 42 retirees and surviving spouses right now.
That'd be an additional 320 per person.
Per person.
Kathy, waiting on you.
I'm very, I'm just, I'm just kind of wondering why this is coming about like this, it just, it doesn't make a lot of sense what they're trying to accomplish here. What does this actually do for the retirees?
It provides them additional funds for that fiscal year, based upon the economic conditions.
The year that's already gone past. The year that's already gone past?
Exactly.
And it doesn't bring it forward to the next year? So it's like the premium pay.
It's like a silent tax from the legislature that they don't have to pay. It's going to be paid for by the taxpayers in Groveland.
So they say when they do a breakdown of it to that point, that the adoption of a higher COLA, even if limited to one year, could increase pension obligations for participating communities for 15 to 20 years, likely requiring increased annual appropriations. This could be particularly challenging for fiscal year 2023, since cities and towns have already approved budgets for the year and have pension funding schedules in place that likely do not contemplate a COLA above three percent.
Make a motion, no?
Make a motion?
No.
Oh, we're going to vote on this?
Yeah.
Any further discussion, we'll vote it to, all right. Second on the motion?
A second on the motion?
Okay.
I do have a question if anybody on the board is, will be participating in the Essex Retirement Program.
I have the teachers. That's not Essex.
That's not Essex County, right?
What's the relevance?
Well, it'd be a conflict to be voting on your own.
I'm voting against myself.
I'm not on it. Am I on it?
No, you have.
Do you want me to abstain to be safe?
I'm not vested and I do have the money for that retirement, so I, that's why I'm staying away from this.
Do I have money in there, like 100 bucks?
Because I know they listed the patrol offices too. What about you, Ed?
No, no, my retirement with the city, hey?
That's Essex County, right?
What are you telling me? Everybody on this board gets a stipend and they kick in 100 bucks a year?
I don't take my stipends.
Then how can we vote on it? Are we all qualified?
I can vote. I don't take my stipends.
It's unanimous. Come on. They told us we got to vote on it to approve it or deny it.
It's still, it requires two-thirds vote of all the participating members. So we are only one vote in that whole grand scheme of things. So if it turns out that the majority or two-thirds majority vote in favor of it, then we would have to go along with that as a member, participating member.
That's a good point. I mean, do we disclose? I mean, I don't think I got more than 200 bucks in there.
Let's just vote.
All right. Move the question. All those in favor of denying this? I guess the motion is for a no, which is a denial of this increase in the COLA. Is that correct?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor of denying it?
What was the vote? Was it a?
Four in one abstention.
No, I voted, I didn't vote to, I wanted to pass it.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry.
Three yes, one no. Three yes for no.
Okay. So you're opposed to her motion?
Absolutely.
In favor of the?
Absolutely opposed to it.
All right. Thanks for the clarification. It was three in, three in favor of her motion to deny. And one opposed to the motion and one abstention. Okay. What's next? Number 10. Upcoming annual appointments to town boards, committees and positions. Rebecca has information on that.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I put together a list of all of the boards and committees as we did the last time. I sent out a press release advertising those positions that were open. And I also reached out to those individuals who were up for renewal and I asked if they wanted to be reappointed. I highlighted and bold the individuals who asked to be reappointed. It didn't come out well in black and white, but there, I also put the ones that asked not to be reappointed. And then I still left their vacant seats highlighted as well. And then on the elected boards, there was only one issue that we had, and that was for the Board of Assessors. And I have two individuals who would like to fill both of the vacant seats, which would mean that the Board of Assessors would be a full board, which is a concern to make sure that we do so since we can make sure we have a quorum in order to set the tax rate. So on that list, you'll see all of the names and whether or not they've asked to be reappointed. And you'll also see that Economic Development Committee as well.
Which we already did.
Yes, correct.
How should we proceed? Should we do them by committee in blocks or? Questions on that?
We have one vacancy on the Conservation. Do we have a name?
We do not have somebody who is asked to be appointed to that position. I can continue to seek to advertise these vacancies once we have this meeting, if the board would like to.
Okay, so?
Yeah, all vacancies, you post them on the web, right?
Yep.
Can we just make a motion then to appoint all of the members who have asked to be reappointed? Might as well keep what we got.
We might need more info than that.
Okay, so?
I don't mind rattling them off unless you want, you want to make a motion and read the names?
Yeah, I'll make a motion and read the names. That's fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So on the Board of Registars, Susan D'Angelo has asked to be reappointed. On the Conservation Commission, Stephanie Bartlett asked to be reappointed. William Formosi asked to be reappointed on the Conservation Commission. On the Council on Aging, Linda Brown asked for reappointment. Barbara Sanborn asked for reappointment. And Deborah Stevenson asked for reappointment. And moving down, Finance Board, Bill O'Neill asked for reappointment. Ruth Favard asked for reappointment. And also on the Finance Board, new would be Carrie Goodwin for one year appointment?
Yes.
And, oh, Alex Woods asked for reappointment, also on the Finance Board. And then on the, do we have a finishing committee anymore? We do not, right?
We technically have not dissolved the committee and one of the members has resigned, but we do still have three members on that committee.
But nobody's up for reappointment? It doesn't say?
Well, it would be up for reappointment if the board wants to continue with that committee.
Can we just put the pause on that one? Okay, so then on the Historical Commission, we have Dale, Dr. Dale Angelico Hart asked to be reappointed. I'm sorry if I didn't say that well. And also Linda Freel, Freel, asked to be reappointed. And then on Recreation Committee, Steve Baker asked to be reappointed. Carrie Goodwin asked to be reappointed. Karen LaBelle asked to be reappointed. Jason Naves asked to be reappointed. Dan Stewart asked to be reappointed. And is this a new one? Sophie Petit?
Yes, she will not be a resident until July 1st, but would like to serve on the committee.
Well, all of these are effective as of July 1st. So that would be the end of the Recreation Committee and the Planning Board's elected. So I'll stop at the elected boards.
And then you have the Community Preservation. We have one member.
Where is that one hiding?
Should be right after.
I have elected boards next.
Did it get cut off?
Uh, I think they did. Let me see. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right. Okay, so community, oh, Ed Watson on the Community Preservation Committee asked to be reappointed. Zoning Board of Appeals, Chris Goodwin asked to be reappointed. Brad?
Legals.
Legals asked to be reappointed to zoning board. And John Stokes II asked to be reappointed to zoning board. And that concludes all the appointed boards. That's my motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the names stated? It's unanimous.
So now we're doing elected boards?
For the elected board, it's just the Board of Assessors and it's Carrie Lynn Goodwin and Dana Moody would like to be appointed to the Board of Assessors for obviously the one year as it is an elected board currently.
Anyone like to make a motion to appoint those two people?
I'll make a motion to appoint Carrie Goodwin and Dana Moody to the Board of Assessors for one year.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Any others?
And then the, the next one becomes the employees.
We need those.
So I tried to make notes on these to be very clear about the appointing authority.
MGL. And if we don't, then they show up tomorrow, nobody's here. On July 1st.
July 1st.
Okay, so starting here with the Town of Groveland, Danielle Albright, the Assistant Treasure Collector, right?
Yep.
This weird, mine is so, okay, so I'm going to highlight. And Robert Baldini, the alternate plumbing gas inspector. Richard Danforth, the plumbing gas inspector. Michelle Beegan, the treasure collector. And then going down, starting at Amy? Wait, wait, wait. Here, Glenn?
Up two.
Oh.
Amy and Randy.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Amy Carrier? I didn't see that.
Carrier?
Carrier. Facilities, Rennie Carroll, Highway Superintendent, we need him. Glenn Clochy? The Alternative Building Inspector, Glenn Clochy? I'm sorry, I'm saying that badly. Tom Costa, Water and Sewer Laborer. Charles DeRosa, thank you. Cemetery Superintendent, sorry Chuck. Oh, wait, I can't do that one. Strike that. I need someone else to do it because my husband's on the commission. So hold that one out, please. Justin Doucette, Library Page. Julie Fabry, Assistant Town Clerk. Sean Hood, Library Assistant. Michael Ingham, Veterans Agent. Sam Jocelyn, Building Inspector and Zone Enforcement. Jamie Koutou, Water and Sewer Laborer.
Sam Jocelyn is also the ADA Coordinator in the Flood Plane Administrator.
Oh, yes, I forgot. His title goes across the whole page. Thank you. And is that Malley? Malley Lee's, Water and Sewer Administrative Assistant. Chris LaCory, Cable Manager. Matthew McNichol, Library Assistant. Steve McPherson, Facilities, got to have him. Susan McCa, oh, no, no, that's would be Council on Aging, right?
Nope. That's the?
Oh, Library, sorry, I'm mixing those. Susan McCannish? McCanchi? McCanchi? McCanchi, I'm going to go with McCanchi. Adult Services Outreach Coordinator. Rebecca Oldham, oh, yes. You're our Parking Clerk and our Town Administrator, so I'm putting you down twice. Ellen Patrillo, our Town Accountant. James Pike, our second alternate Building Inspector. Dan Rio, Highway Senior Labor Operator. These are Council on Ages, except when I get to Annie. There's just one. The, okay, so Annie Schindler is our Town Planner and Environmental Program Coordinator. Matthew Silva, Water and Sewer Laborer. Colin Stokes, Water and Sewer Superintendent. Thomas Tambarello, Electrical Inspector. Donna Arnold, Water and Sewer Office Manager. Lauren Towler, Senior Library Assistant. Robert Val, no, I don't, yes, we do appoint him.
Just because he's a, just like me, I'm the Parking Clerk and you're appointing him for the Forest Fire Warden.
Okay, so I'll appoint you as the Forest Fire Warden. Robert Valentine. Julie Yeva, our Assessing Manager. Justin Bird, our Highway Senior Labor Operator. Zachary Brown, Highway Senior Labor Operator. William Green, Highway Farmer-Mechanic. Kevin Reddington, Electrical Inspector Alternate. Edward Reed, Election Constable. Do we do those?
Yep.
Okay, not the police, okay. And David Tettle, Election Constable. And Edward Reed, Compost Operator. And Mead, do I throw them right in?
Tallaman Costa.
Mead, Tallaman and Costa, our Town Council. Rebecca Oldham is the, do I appoint you? Alternate to the Planning Commissioner. Annie Schindler is our Member of the Merriman Valley Planning Commissioner. And do we appoint her? No, you're contracted, so we don't.
That's why they're contracted employees.
Okay, so, and that I think is everybody except for Chuck at the cemetery that I took off, which you can vote without.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
And then you have the Groveland Electric Light Department. They're appointed by the Light Department, the Light Commission. You have the Board of Health. They're appointed by the Board of Health. The COA has their appointments. And then the Fire Department, the Fire Chief has the appointing authority over his department. The Police Department is also under the Board of Selectment. So that list is also for the board to vote on this evening.
Oh, okay. Do you want to do the cemetery that I had to not do?
I'll make a motion to appoint Charles DeSorres, Junior Cemetery Superintendent. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
And I recuse.
Four in favor and one recusal.
Yep.
Next up, Police Department.
Want to read them?
Go ahead.
Want to read them? I'll give it a go. We'll try. Cynthia Batista is our Full-Time Dispatcher and Lockup Keeper. Barbara Bilo is our Reserve Dispatch Lockup Keeper. Danielle Baril is our Officer. Kyle Alardo, Officer, Reserve Dispatch and Lockup Keeper.
That should be dispatch, that should be dispatch and lockup keeper.
Officer, not Officer?
I believe that was the update. I was waiting for the updated list from the.
So just Reserve Dispatcher, Lockup Keeper for Kyle?
Not Reserve. I think it's Dispatcher, Lockup Keeper.
Oh, so no Reserve?
Yeah.
So Officer, though? Yes?
I don't think so. I thought he would be here this evening, but he's not. So if you'd like to hold on that, I can have you hold on that.
I'll just circle it and we'll come back. Okay, so then Christopher, uh-oh.
First, oh.
First does Sergeant. John D. Fornesi, Reserve Patrol Officer. Michael Fornesi, Officer. Edwin Fornier, Officer. Eric Gorski, Reserve Patrol Officer. Garrett Emgrier, Reserve Patrol Officer. Joel Enriquez, Officer. Christopher Lattalian, Officer. Daniel McDonald, Officer.
Not me.
Joseph McMains, Officer. Don T. May, Reserve Dispatcher, Lockup Keeper. Brett Moyer, Reserve Dispatcher, Lockup Keeper, Reserve Patrol Officer. Jeffrey Gillen, Emergency Management Assistant Director. Caitlin Bukarsky, Full-Time Dispatch, Lockup Keeper. Stephen Patron, Sergeant. Robert J. Ramandi, Dock Keeper. Heather Riley, Lieutenant. Adam Sanborn, Officer. Steven Sergeant, something wiped out, but Dispatcher, Lockup Keeper, Animal Control Officer, Reserve Patrol Officer, Emergency Management Director? Yes.
Yes.
And there was a little bit of, some letters not.
It was Director, yeah.
Okay. And then Joshua Sendoney, Sergeant. Julian Terry, Reserve Dispatcher, Lockup Keeper. Nicholas RC Toleas, Dock Keeper. Rob Ramandi, Dock Master. And Michael Vetz, Harbor Master.
And I would say that it would be Reserve Dispatcher and Lockup Keeper. And then for Alardo, but we can come back next meeting if necessary and appoint as an officer as well, if that's a mix-up.
So do we want him in there or not in there?
I would include him as Reserve Dispatcher, Lockup Keeper.
Okay, so Kyle Alardo, Reserve Dispatcher, Lockup Keeper. And that completes the list.
Second that.
Any discussion? We'll vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Is that all the appointees?
Yes.
I'd like to thank everyone serving the town and appreciate your service and hope you have a good year and wear hair if you need us. We don't have a what?
Oh, yes, that was under, it says elected, but it's not.
Right, we circled back. What are we missing?
So there's, under Town Clerk, it says Elizabeth Coniff, elected. And then underneath, it says Burial Agent.
So make a motion to appoint Elizabeth Coniff, Burial Agent. Is that correct?
Yes.
Second that.
Second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of?
That was on, that's right. So that's why.
There you go.
It was weird, mine did this now. I just got it paged. My page just got mixed. But it was better than the first time.
I skipped over Comprehensive Master Plan Feedback by the Town Admin. I skipped over Comprehensive Master Plan Feedback by the Town Administrator. I think that would be... I don't know if we need to vote on anything, do we?
We do not need to vote on anything, it was just an update and to ask if there was any initial comments that were made on the draft that was sent out to you by the Town Planner a couple of weeks ago.
I have comments.
Sure.
Okay, it's a really long report. Comment number one, it's like 150 pages. So, sometimes I wasn't sure I knew exactly what I was reading. There was one initial that came up, EPCD, a lot under the table. What's EPCD?
Economic Development Planning and Conservation.
So, Economic Development and Conservation Development. Who is that?
That's the department that we created.
Oh, okay, that's the...okay, I knew I probably knew what it was, and then I was like, I don't know if I know what that is. Overall, I was very impressed with the report so far. I had a couple of concerns. One, with the survey including just 68 people. I just...the statistician in me just says, that's not enough of a survey to draw conclusions. Certainly, you can use it as an information, but they used it later in their poll, like 35% of the people feel, and 68 people, that's not statistically sound for this town, that survey. So, I didn't know if they had the money or the wherewithal to do a statistically sound survey. In other words, determine the percentage of response you actually need to get and go after it. To see for sure what people in Groveland really feel, because that, to me, that survey is interesting, but certainly you can't say that's representative of the town.
It was very difficult to get feedback on the survey. We went to Groveland Day, we put it out on social media, we did it at Town Meeting last year. I don't know if you remember, Annie was present, and we had boards out there, we did QR codes. We really did try and push the survey as much as we possibly could, and we just were not getting the responses that we had hoped for. I know that we were trying to look at different ways, we know we included it in the Council on Aging Newsletter. I know Annie was here on Older Americans' Day out front, and she had paper copies for them to fill out. We really did try and get as much feedback as we possibly could, but people just don't want to fill out a survey. We even had a basket of chocolate donated at Groveland Day to try and get people to give us feedback. But we really did struggle in getting a more representative view from the public in having those intended engagement sessions, as well as any public input forum online, or, again, we reached out to the Council on Aging, but the participation was not ideal.
Well, my question is, we've hired someone to do the forum, and I understand we have to do part of the work, but could we at least try to get a representative sample in certain age brackets throughout the town? Ask the company to do it, to statistically randomly select names from different demographics in the town, and follow up with them and see if we can get their participation somehow? Because I just feel that it's interesting information, otherwise. To me, it's just interesting information. But it's probably the people care a lot, and I must say the people that didn't respond don't care a lot, but people that tend to be like on the inner circle know so much more than the other people. And if we're really trying to figure out what people are willing to vote for, support, and be good with in our town, if we're trying to do it with a survey, I think we have to do a little better. That's all, that's just...no question that 68 people can't be used as a survey, I don't think, for the purposes of a master plan. Just, I think it's informational, yes.
It's less than 1%.
Yeah, and it's in...
Of the population.
And demographics, you just don't know what you have.
It's a scintilla.
I don't mind asking the consultant to see if we can do another survey or ask for additional feedback, but, I mean, there's no problem with doing so. So, I agree with you, I would like more people to have participated, I would like more feedback as to whether or not we can get it. I'm not certain that we can force anyone to do anything, but I definitely don't mind and definitely agree and encourage going back out and trying to see if there's any additional information we can get.
Rebecca, what's the timeline on this? Does this have to get voted on, and any time is of the essence situation?
So, this does not. This is our Comprehensive Master Plan, it is ultimately approved by the Planning Board, not the Board of Selectmen. We do intend to have a July meeting where the consultants will be present to make a larger presentation to both the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, but the Planning Board have voiced their strong support for having the Board of Selectmen also vote to endorse the plan, so it is a plan that moves Groveland forward, and that all are on the same page. So, there's no timeline per se, but it is something that we've been working with or working on for the last year and a half, so we do wanna keep the progress going.
Is it possible to put a survey, if it's not too voluminous, in a tax bill and send it out to all the taxpayers? Would that be permitted or feasible?
I'm not sure we can do that in a tax bill. There's certain things that we can send out in a tax bill legally, like trash notifications and things of that nature, so I would have to double-check whether or not that survey would be allowed of that nature, but we can definitely take a look at that for sure.
Because it's...
But...
Issue came up years ago, I mean, it's not advocating any position either way, so, I mean, maybe if you had a regulation on it or some rule on it, then that's clear on its face, but...
But from a statistical point of view, to make...to have information that's valid, you have to look at the amount of residents that are in the different demographic groups, and then you have to get samples of those groups, so just randomly sending out to everybody might...
Not everyone's a taxpayer, I get it.
Well, it's not just that, it's you wanna...I don't wanna use the word target, but you wanna target groups of people in certain demographical...I would suggest age brackets, probably. But I'll just run through quick my other...because I've read through most of it, but I still wanna go back over it again. I thought on page 33 was incredibly good information. How difficult would it be to shift the tax base? We've talked about that a lot, to get a higher percentage of the tax base on commercial. Report states that we are 95.3% residential tax base, and to even change that down to 90%, in other words, increase commercial to 10%, we would have to double our commercial base. Double our commercial base. Not quite sure that would mean...what that would mean in terms of how it would change what the town looks like. Maybe it's just monetary thing, I'm not sure, but I thought that was very, very interesting information to find in there. They talked a lot about preserving the character of the town while looking for ways to promote development, even housing development, that would allow elderly to age in their homes, or young people who've grown up in the town to remain in their community, which both tailends of the population are finding that difficult to do. And I thought that was very valid information, given something to think about a lot. And the only other thing that I was kind of looking in there for, and I didn't see is the thing that Annie had looked at with us that would force us to form a condensed area of housing in order to still get grants, is that in there, and I just didn't realize it, or is that...
The MBTA zoning, you mean?
Yes, is that...
Yes, it's mentioned in there.
Okay, I didn't see what they said about that, because I'm still...
It's also called 3A zoning.
Okay, so, I probably didn't understand the vocabulary. I just...I'm concerned about that high-density type of development in our town. I'm just...I don't know that that's what we want. And other than that, I thought that it really gives a lot of information, I can't stress that enough. I wish...probably, most people won't read 150 pages of it. So, if we could make like a highlights version, like the trailer for a movie, maybe we can get that out to people with the highlights and get some in back. Because sometimes you got to say something to people to get them to say something back, is what I'm wondering.
Is the plan online for people to review?
So, after the initial comment and after the presentation, it will be released to the public for public comment and public presentation.
I think that's the important next step, and it can be modified by the Planning Board if they get feedback from more than 68 people.
Yep. And that's the goal.
So, we'll advertise it right now. I mean, please, once it's posted, read it if you care. Get involved if you can, if you want to, and let your voice be heard on the direction of the town going forward.
It talks about the Valley's group property, possible uses of that, or...
Talks about a lot of things, it's...
There's things that we all have talked about around town all the time, 150 Center Street, a lot of hot-button issues on it.
We could spend hours on it.
Yep.
Hours.
Completely.
Anyone else?
No.
All right, there's no vote on that. Town Administrator time.
So, I just have two things. One, I just wanna congratulate the Police Department, and specifically Chief Gillan and Officer Fornier, of all their work that they had done, because they have finally received accreditation. So, that has been a long time working for the Police Department, and they just received notification, so we're very excited for them. And then, the second thing is that there was mention about the Town Administrator Goals for the upcoming fiscal year, so I took the chance to kinda outline a couple of them. I would like to be able to put together something more formal for the Board, but just for an initial preview, I tried to break it down into different areas that the Board might like me to focus, specifically with civic engagement, community and outreach, produce a monthly news blog to inform residents and others about things happening in town, and projects and initiatives, and also spotlight departments and varying projects that they're working on. I would like to develop a committee handbook to reflect the most current information on roles and responsibilities of the committees and their members, while also providing educational resources to ensure compliance with applicable laws and regulations. On the side of Human Resources, I would like to revise the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual per the Collins Sutter Recommendations, and also include the necessary revisions with our Personnel Bylaw. I would like to develop an intern program. I'd also like to implement annual trainings for employees utilizing the Community Compact Grant for funding options to provide such. On the department side of things, I would like to continue to encourage communication and create cross-departmental teams to improve cooperation and coordination of services. From the Board of Selectmen side, I'd like to provide support for implementing economic development initiatives and promote local businesses, which is something that we kind of took a step towards this evening. I would also like to formalize and write down Board of Selectmen policies for liquor licenses and also other permits that are granted through the Board of Selectmen Office. I would like to update and develop a permitting and development guide for those businesses looking to do work here in Groveland, and create a dedicated landing page on our website. I'd also, from an infrastructure side of things, would like to develop a Building Grounds Open Space Maintenance and Improvement Plan. Identify responsibilities for building grounds, open spacing and recreation parcels, prepare maintenance plans for identified locations. In terms of infrastructure, investigate future grant opportunities for additional road maintenance, utilizing complete streets, shared streets, et cetera. And then for IT, I'd like to finalize the IT Inventory and Maintenance Plan with the grant that we received from the Community Compact. And from a budget and finance, I'd like to work towards achieving the financial threshold as established in our new adopted financial policies. And from a procurement side, I'd like to look into new firms for our CPA, as well as identify any other longstanding contracts that we have, and whether or not we need to go up to bid and change things up. So, that's just kind of a preview of a bunch of the things that I kinda started to think about, and there's a lot there, so I would like to kinda go through and narrow that down just a little bit.
Is that all? Thank you. Would anyone like to ask Rebecca or any...anything?
Say wow.
You wanna explain what all those things were? We'll do that at other meetings, but...no, it sounds fantastic, and we'll put some, if not all, of those things on future agendas and get into more detail. Anything else? We're doing good. I didn't ask initially...well, there's no written submissions for public comments, I just wanna say that.
Uh-oh.
Ready? Right?
I didn't receive any.
Mike's got his hand up.
You got your hand up?
He does.
We go back to number four.
Because we didn't do the liquor license.
Oh, all right. But that's not a public comment, is it?
No.
All right, so, just for anyone who doesn't know, public comments are written submissions for public comment, they must be made before the start of a meeting. So, in the future, if you wanna submit something, write it up, and as long as we get it before the meeting, I think it's perfectly procedurally okay. All right, Mike, sorry, I overlooked you.
No, that's no problem.
One day...one...you gotta flag me down sometimes.
Mike Dempsey from Conservation, so, I'm...got some more information about the liquor license request at VZ Park, so Vanessa said that she sent Rebecca the required information this afternoon with the updated insurance binder and TIPS certification of the bartender, so, should be all set.
So, yes, you did send up the updated insurance binder that names the Town of Groveland as an additional insured, but I didn't see a number for a license that you were looking for.
Is there a requirement for a license or a training course?
It's the TIPS...tip...it's called TIPS Certification.
And what's the issuing authority on that? Where do you get it? So, how do people know?
I mean... They have to take that course.
What's a certificate from the state, or is it a private entity?
No, I think it's a private concern.
So, I had the application, and I have the contract that you also have that lists the company, but I don't have a license, that number, like you had asked for. That's the only thing. I have the agreement, I have the contract, I have the application from VZ, I have the updated insurance binder. So, I don't know if it was like...
You have the TIPS Certification?
I don't have it in the electronic version unless she submitted it in the paper packet, that's the only thing. I don't have that. So, it must be in the paper copy. If you wanna make a vote contingent upon verifying that that's part of the paper copy, I think that would be sufficient.
Yep. Wanna make that motion, Kathy?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Wayne Curry of 19 Orchard Street, Merrimack, Massachusetts, for June 23rd, 2023, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at VZ Park, 201 Washington Street, Groveland, Massachusetts, and contingent on providing the certificate or license number for the liquor service.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Genonymous.
Thank you.
All right, then we got...Jason, would you like to take the liberty with the approval of the warrants?
I'll make a motion to approve Bill Payroll Warrant 2349 in the amount of $206,107.24.
Second on that?
Second.
Kathy, second to it?
Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Yep.
Genonymous.
I'll make a motion to approve Bill Warrant 2349 in the amount of $2,134,307.54, which breaks down from town, $93,254.55. Water and Sewer, $403,184.59. Payroll withholding, $38,131.28. Light bills, $247,938.22. Grants and revolving, $319,162.2. And Penticott Assessment, $132,638.88.
Second.
Discussion, I got a question. Is that the monthly payment on the school, or is...what's the frequency of that payment?
I believe it's quarterly.
Quarterly?
I believe so.
A million dollars? Anyone else?
No, that doesn't make sense.
Can't be quarter.
Yeah, we pay more than that.
Because the assessment's all... Because the assessment's all over that.
Assessment's like what, 13?
That's the remaining portion, I know.
It's monthly, it's got to be, right? $12 million a year, 12, 13 million? All right. All those in favor?
Yep.
Selectmen time. Kathy, would you like to go first?
Just one time.
I asked you.
I, I said okay, just one time. So, I continue to look at numbers. I know I have a lot of fellow residents who have jumped in and said they want to help study this Chapter 70, why we don't have any money problem in Groveland. And I'll start to send out more information and we'll get together and meet and talk about it. But, in looking back through our history, I think you need to be able to learn from your mistakes. And in Groveland, we made a lot of mistakes past 20 years or so, dating back to 2006 when we ran an underwrite after passing, passing an override the year before for $519,000. We ran an underwrite, taking back $376,000 or $377,000. And then guess what happened a year later? We ran an override for, for $700,000. And, and then on top of that, I took some time before the meeting and Rebecca was kind enough to pull out the audit reports. Went back to 2006, I think I found the evidence of the lack of reconciliation. So, we were basically spending money that we really weren't sure we had anyway. So, we have a complication of not planning out some measured steps in the tax rate, so letting it snowball up to a $1.2 million override, bad idea. Let's not do that again. We know the 2.5% doesn't do it. I mean, just, just the new growth and the 2.5% is only roughly about $550,000. It's never going to match all of the increases that occur. But, if we can start being more proactive with a forecast, we'll be better off. I also looked at online, you can look and say, well, how much room does Groveland have in its tax levy? And we're right at, at the cap. We used to have, you know, $140,000 of wiggle room up there. We didn't have to spend it, but we had the room there without going for an override. And due to this poor planning and lack of reconciliation, so we spent money and we didn't account for it properly. Then back in 2021, we had a wiggle room of $1,334 on a $20 million budget. It's not good financial planning. So, now we have a town administrator who's giving us financial advice and financial planning. And part of what I hope the study group will get the word out and talk about is, let's start taking that advice to heart and let's not repeat these mistakes. Let's look ahead and let's plan. And if we, if we do things in little measured steps, we don't need to put a $1.2 million override out again. We may need to do something in three or four years that's more modest. But, this kind of planning is, is just terrible. It's, it's what put us in this position at, at the worst possible time to have to put an override out there. So, just some, some more information for people to think about.
All set?
Yes, that was uplifting, wasn't it?
Uplifting. Live within your means, make some sense.
And balance your checkbook.
I'm all set today. Thank you.
You're going?
Yeah.
You have something?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, I didn't know.
Oh, yeah. It'll only take 20 minutes or so.
All right. I'll do, I'll do it quickly. I'm not going anywhere.
Just like to congratulate the graduates of Penticott, Woodya Tech and Essex Tech. They made it through. Congratulate all of them. And also tomorrow, June 6th, D-Day, 1944. Everybody remember that? Other than that, I'm all set. I'll leave the rest for the next meeting.
I was going to mention D-Day, but yes, that's very important.
I knew you would after I mentioned it.
Yeah. After you mentioned it. That's enough for one evening. I don't have anything else.
One more thing. Approval of the minutes?
Well, I'm not done yet, but I'm just...
Did we administer?
My selectman time, I don't have any...
Or the executive?
All their unfinished business. Anybody?
Just, I'll check with the town administrator, but I did want to get that recycling waste management committee kicked off soon. So...
Okay.
We're about two years off from the end of the contract, so it's time.
Yeah, we should.
Yep.
On that, I mean, it's worth exploring, you know, I'm not in favor of building the bureaucracy, but should we look at whether or not it's cheaper to bring it in-house and cut the middleman out? Because I'm sure waste management doesn't do it for a hobby and there's got to be some sort of profit margin in there. Would be, would it be worth looking at getting two trucks and a couple guys and trying to cut that cost down?
I think a committee could study all options, but also look at options to increase recycling and decrease our tonnage at the same time. I would make it a twofold charge to look at...
Decrease our tonnage?
Yeah, decrease tonnage is, is, should always be what we're seeking to do.
So, how do we do that? How do you move the ball forward on that?
Well, you look for more things to recycle, more ways to recycle. Say 30, they say 35% of our trash is food, food waste.
In terms of the committee, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, they can, there's a lot of information available through the board, the State Board of Health, I believe it is. Is that what they're called, the State Board of Health?
Mass DEP?
Yeah, them, Mass DEP. They have a huge website with tons of information about almost everything to do with trash and recycling. And I know the Board of Health next door has done a lot of work on that, too. They might be willing to share some of their research.
Anything else?
About trash?
Yeah, just on that, Dan?
Yeah, go ahead.
No.
That, we should, we should, not only the Board of Health, but we should also get, it would probably be run under the Highway Department, get the Highway Superintendent's weigh in on that. The employee probably would be, would be Highway and see what his experience is with it.
I think it's just one option. There's quite a lot to look at.
I've been working with the Highway Superintendent a lot lately about a lot of different ways, whether or not it's, you know, investing in, you know, providing composting options and limiting the amount of tonnage and all those other types of inventive and creative ways, pay-as-you-go, things of that nature. And I'd welcome the opportunity to work with any committee or any Board of Selectmen with the Highway Superintendent and the Board of Health, obviously, to discuss those issues further. I know G N Dempsey has been a very large advocate, a big advocate for trying to find those solutions, so I know that there's members in the community who are also interested.
Okay.
It's going to be great.
We can't burn the trash?
No.
No? What do you think, Mike? Groveland Incineration Station? Try to get people involved. Maybe a new landfill in town, huh? That'd get people out to vote. Anyone else have any old business? Jason?
No.
Edward?
No.
Just inquiry as to get the lead out of the bag now. Is that out for bid? What's the status of the water bubblers?
So, we sent out a scope of services to three firms that provide that work. We have heard back from one of them. There's question as to whether or not there is electrical behind the existing coolers because the new coolers require a certain amount of electrical power out, they require some type of power to, to refrigerate the water as it's supposed to be. So, they believe so. So, Bob Danforth met out with one of the contractors over the weekend and so we're hoping that we will get their proposal. And then we will need to coordinate this summer what the install will be with the summer camp utilizing the, the new addition portion. So, we hope to have this done before the start of the school year.
Did we leave out an, an electrical component within the spec?
I reached out to...
Is that the issue?
Well, I reached out to the engineer and they had said that they had, they had accounted for it, but they weren't sure whether or not it was the proper voltage or the, the proper, would provide the proper power for the unit that they're proposing to install. So, it would just increase the price slightly based upon...
They might need to run wires.
Yes. And so, we're just waiting for them to figure out whether or not that's the case. We don't believe so, but they're just confirming before they submit the proposal because they don't want to submit a price that then ultimately gets changed in the end because there's no electrical. But, we do believe that there is the electrical there that's able to accommodate, at least in all of the, the bubblers that we're looking for, not the ones in the newer area that are already lead-free in the new addition because they are already serviced from the new service line. It's just those bubblers that are in the older portion of the school. So, we are making progress. I hope to get that contract underway by July 1 and work should be completed by the end of, end of the school, before the school year.
Great. That's it? What's next? Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting? Something I forgot, maybe?
Do we accept the executive session minutes at this meeting?
I haven't done that, yeah. I'm out of order.
You're pausing so much, I wasn't sure.
No, I got Mike. He reminded me over here.
Oh, good.
All right, so there's nothing that was not reasonably anticipated. Correspondence? What do we get for correspondence? We got this, right?
We did.
Anybody want to go to the little antique appraisal road show?
Road show.
There you go. Check it out. Circling back. We'll circle back. I'm like that lady Jen there. Was that her name? What are you talking about? We'll circle back. Anyways, no, we did the warrants. What am I looking for? Oh, minutes. Approval of the minutes. Board of Selectmen Executive Session Meeting Minutes of May 8th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve Board of Selectmen Executive Session Meeting Minutes for May 8th, 2023.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? I think that does it unless I missed something.
I do want to just let the board know, just for a point of information, I will be unavailable the week of June 19th, so I will not be here at your next meeting. I will be available to help the chair set the agenda and make sure you have your packets and everything, but I will not be available and hopefully not reachable by phone for the week of the 19th.
Dan? Just, we're going at the calendar. The, the first meeting of July is on July 3rd and it may, maybe for the next meeting we think about at, at some time either moving it to a different date or if there's not much on the agenda, just hold it till the next meeting?
Skip one?
We had the one.
Yeah, we just signed the warrants, but just give it some thought over the next couple of weeks for the, see, see how you want to handle it.
What would be the next day coming back?
That would be...
So, you're telling me the 3rd's a Monday, 4th Tuesday?
Yeah.
Can we meet on the, on Wednesday, the 5th? We don't want to. Well, it's only half a week to one. No, no, no.
Well, it's something we can think about and bring it up in the next meeting.
Okay. I might not be here at the next meeting, but it's tentative. All right. So, I think that's everything. Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 8:10 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? You don't want to stay? All those in favor? Unanimous.
All opposed.
Everybody have a good night and...